To call this village board meeting of Thursday, March 20, 2025 to order. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Merritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojek?
Here.
Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic which is states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Trustees and communications, trustee Schmidt.
The next coffee and chat with the village president board will be Saturday, April 5th, at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at (630) 909-5302, or contact your district trustee. Register today for the village's e-newsletter. On the first Monday of each month, we will email you information regarding the month ahead with news from the village Glendale Heights, various programs, events, and other important information. To register, please visit the village website at www.glandalehighes.org. If you have any questions, please contact the village's public relations division at (630) 909-5350. Thank you.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Earth Hour is a worldwide event, bringing together 152 countries and a digital reach of over 200 million people. The village of Glendale Heights invites the community to join others around the world by turning off their lights, televisions, computers, cell phones, and all electronic devices for one hour this Saturday, March 22nd from 8:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. For more information, please visit www地hearthhour.org to see what this impact can do on our planet. Stop by Sports Hub on the first and third Thursdays of each month for the Glendale Heights seasonal market. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. If you would like to be a vendor or for more information, please contact Tanya McCo at (630) 909-5459.
Trustee Light?
During the month of April and May, parking restrictions will be in effect from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to street sweeping. Color-coded no-parking signs are posted in four different zones throughout the village. The street parking is not allowed Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find your zone, please visit the village's website. For any questions on street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at (630) 260-6040. Do you have any unwanted cell phones, retired U.S. flags, bikes, batteries, or other recyclables? Drop them off at the One Stop Reuse and Recycle Depot on Saturday, April 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. All items can be dropped off at the GH2O Aquatic Center parking lot located at 240 Civic Center Plaza. Document shredding will be available at the event with a limit of four boxes per vehicle. For more information or a complete list of accepted items, please visit glendalehighes.org or call (630) 260-6000.
Thank you. Trustee Schmidt. Trustee clerk Schmidt.
Join the village of Glendale Heights team. We are now hiring for a variety of positions at the GH2O Aquatic Center and the Sports Hub, ranging from lifeguard to park ranger. Stop by the Sports Hub on Saturday, April 5th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for our job fair with on-the-spot interviews and job offers. For more information, please visit www地hundalehighes.org.
Trustee Mari Tato?
Join us for the annual Safety Town Easter egg hunt hosted by the Glendale Heights Police Department. Children ages 12 and under are invited to join on Saturday, April 12th, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. for our annual egg hunt. Pre-registration for a time slot is required and is available on the village's website. For more information on Safety Town Easter egg hunt and to pre-register, please visit www地hundalehighes.org or contact Tanya McCo at (630) 909-5459. Hop on over on Saturday, April 12th, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens for our annual breakfast with the Easter bunny. And all-you-can-eat pancake breakfasts will be served and include sausage and beverage. Photos with the Easter bunny will also be available. No pre-registration is required and the event fee is paid at the door. Adult breakfast costs $5. Children breakfast costs $3. And the pictures are $3 apiece. For more information, call (630) 260-6060.
Trustee Pojek?
I'm not talking today.
Okay, trustee Schroder?
Are you interested in gardening, flowers, and greenery? Register for garden plots in the new community garden located at College Park. There are 24 regular garden plots for those interested in growing their own vegetables, flowers, and more. Plots are available to rent on a yearly basis. For more information, please contact Jessica at (630) 909-5123. Also, senior citizens age 65 or better are encouraged to apply for the senior citizens' utility tax rebate program. Qualifying applicants will receive a $75 rebate check as part of this program if they meet the following guidelines. If you're age 65 or better, on or before December 31st, 2024, or you have a spouse who is age 65. If you've lived in Glendale Heights for all of 2024 as either an owner or a renter. If you have earned no more than $45,000 of gross income during 2024. And you have a utility billed and paid for in your name. Applications are being accepted now through April 30th. If you have any questions, please contact the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-6050 or the Finance Department at (630) 260-6000. Thank you.
Number two, a proclamation to proclaim April 1st to April 30th, 2025 as violent mayor's challenge for water conservation. Number two, a proclamation to proclaim the month of April as autism awareness month. If there are no objection, I will sign these proclamations. Next is a public discussion of agenda items. Anyone in the public that would like to address this board on agenda items only?
Mr. Epstein, Glendale Heights, Illinois, love drive. Since we discussed parking regulations, I just came in. Chief, I mentioned it to one of your officers. There are two illegally parked vehicles in the handicap zone without their handicapped flags properly displaced. I hope they both get their proper citations today. Thank you.
Anybody else from public? None? You have the concert agenda before you. Would acting village administrator Doc Flynn please read the concert agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. Consent, one, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of May 6, 2025. Two, approval of committee the whole meeting minutes of May 6, 2025. Three, approval of the counts payable listing of March 20th, 2025 in the amount of $3,828,456.54. Four, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement between the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering for the furnishing of professional engineering services for the Mill Pond Culvert Rehabilitation Project. Five, resolution authorizing issuance of notices of award and authorizing execution of contracts for the purchase of 2025 roadway construction materials for the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Six, a resolution authorizing issuance of notice of award and authorizing execution of contracts for the purchase of 2025 construction materials for the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Seven, resolution of the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois adopting third quarter fiscal year 2024-2025 budget amendments. Eight, resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of award and authorizing execution of a contract for the installation of windows at the Glendale Heights Fleet's facility. Nine, resolution to approve and ratify the execution of an electricity supply agreement. Ten, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement between the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Hitchcock Design Incorporated, DBA Hitchcock Design Group for the furnishing of professional engineering services for the design and construction phase services for the Simons Property Ozlet Grant Project. Eleven, a resolution rejecting all bids for the purchase of rifles for the Glendale Heights Police Department. Twelve, approval of consent.
Is there a motion to approve the concert agenda? Trustee Schmidt?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Trustee Light? Second, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Merritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The concert agenda is approved. All business, there is none, new business. A motion to waive first reading on new business items 2 to 4. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business items 2 to 4? A trustee pad?
Motion to waive first reading on number 2 and 4?
Trustee Light?
Second.
Two through four.
Yeah, two through four.
I'm sorry.
Who's second?
The second is trustee Light.
Thank you.
Where is the reading first? Okay. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business items? Yeah, we got motion. Discussion? Sorry, my fault. Discussion? None? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Merritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business items 2 to 4 is approved. Number two, an ordinance to waive first, to waive bid and accept the proposal of ETS Intelligence LLC for security services for the 2025 Glendale Heights Fest and authorize the execution of an agreement by and between ETS Intelligence LLC and the village of Glendale Heights, LNI. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2025-11. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-11? Or pad?
So moved.
Trustee Schmidt?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Merritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to adopt ordinance 2025-11 is approved. Number three, an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus personal property owned by the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, and cheeses 4x4-1-2009-4-F450-CAP and cheeses with snowplow and dump horse. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2025-12. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-12? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
A second trustee pad. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Merritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2025-12 is approved. Number four, an ordinance to waive bid and accept the proposal of Poly Dine Incorporated and authorize the execution of a notice of award purchase order for the purchase of polymer for use of wastewater treatment plant. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2025-13. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-13? Trustee Light?
So moved. Second.
Trustee Siddiqui, second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Merritato?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2025-13 is approved. Number five, an ordinance reserving and authorizing the transfer of volumes cap in connection with private activity bond issues and related matters. This is first reading only. Number six, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the Board of Education of the Queen Bee District 16 and the village of Glendale Heights for the use of facilities and sites. This is resolution 2025-R-36. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-R-36?
So moved.
Second.
Second is Mary, trustee Mary. Okay. Any discussion on this before we vote in on this? None?
It's not public comment.
Yes, you know. So should we? Roll call again, please.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Merritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution 2025-R-36 is approved. Number seven, a resolution authorizing the execution of a lease-obliged purchase agreement for one John Deere mower and one John Deere tractor. This is resolution 2025-R-36.
Thirty-seven.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt resolution 2025-R-36? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Light?
Excuse me? It should be thirty-seven?
Yeah.
We voted on thirty-six previously.
Yeah, right.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry?
I think my trustee Light did, correct?
Correct. The motion should be for R-37.
Thirty-seven.
All right. We'll amend the motion to reflect RS, RES 2025-R-37.
Thirty-seven.
And who's second?
Second.
I said.
Yeah, bad second. Our discussion?
Second.
None? So we have to take over our?
Yeah, we have to take over. It was just the wrong number was.
Okay, yeah. Actually, for thirty-six, ordinance, we took two-time roll call. So that was confusion. So thirty-seven we did already.
This is thirty-seven?
Yeah, thirty-seven, right. Public discussion?
So you need to vote.
Yeah.
We need to vote. Need to vote on thirty-seven?
You need to do.
Again, okay. Again, roll call, please. Okay, thirty-four, thirty-seven.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Merritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution 2025-R-37 is approved. Next, a public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on agenda item only? Your name and address, please.
Kelly Lambert, Gilberto Street, Glendale Heights. I'm hoping I'm talking about the right one. First of all, I'm not sure how we approved the board meetings of May 6th, 2025, when that's not even here yet. And then I was just got, I mean, I don't go to these often, so I'm not really sure of your procedure here, but I thought that you guys went through agenda item one. It said to not do agenda items 2 through 4, and then you went through 2 to 4. So I'm not quite understanding. It's kind of hard to keep up with you, but I don't know how the minutes could have been approved from a meeting that hasn't happened yet. Thank you.
There's a scribbler's error and, yeah, should be March.
March.
Okay, but that's what you read, and you guys all approved it.
Anybody else from public? None? At the active session, there is none. Adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn? Trustee Mary?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, trustee Siddiqui. A roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Merritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Light, you have the committee of the board.
All right. I would like to call the committee, the whole meeting for March 20th, 2025, to order. Marie, could you please note who is here?
Noted.
Noted. Does anyone have any additions or deletions to add to this? You guys are too kind.
Half million dollar damages.
Okay. All right. We'll go on to committee reports. Glendale Heights Golf Club Committee?
No report.
Oh, yes, historical committee, my favorite time. I do have a quick report. Due to the recent passing of my father, I was able to go through some of his information, and I found what was the original brochure selling the house that he had bought. It was kind of interesting to see how they actually put this together and tried to sell it to you. You know, next to an established town of Glen Ellen, neighborhood Glendale Heights Shopping Center within walking distance. It was really kind of a neat way to try and put it through. What I found most amazing was the fact that I look at the paperwork where my father bought the Piper model, the exact same one, the basic model. He paid $17,400 for that house. Principal and interest on it was $102.87. Total monthly payment being $127 a month. I thought, wow, what a time to grow up in. And he had a $7,000 VA loan also for this. So it was interesting to see how we've transitioned. And phone numbers on here are, don't even have prefixes on them. So this, we'll be getting a copy of this into the historic house, so we can at least document it. I thought it was really kind of a neat idea.
Which year was it?
Which, 1965, I think this was in?
I don't know.
It was like very, I'm impressed. He kept the papers that long. He even had a baby picture with me with it. That was the funny part. All right.
Mike, what was the address?
It was 345 Lincoln. So right over here. Yep. All right, we'll move on to, that was the end of my report, thanks. Onto the ordinance committee.
The ordinance committee would like to have a meeting on April 7th at 7:00 p.m.
Discussing?
April 7th at 7:00 p.m.?
Yes.
For?
Discussion on what?
For, I don't have my agenda completed. Do I have to tell you before we?
Well.
Decide on a date?
Before April 4th.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Okay. Parks and Recreation Committee?
Okay, before I begin my report, I received just now another check from Bev Pappas to support the baseball and softball program. Kate, I'm gonna give you this check. It's for $2,000. And. Bev didn't want to make a big deal about this, but I definitely want to give the opportunity to say thank you from the board and everybody that else is involved in baseball. We are doing very well with our number of baseball and softball rebuilding program. And as for the Property Recreation Committee, we did meet Tuesday night, had a number of items on the agenda, a couple of highlights with the number that we discussed in baseball and soccer. Had 168 kids sign up for baseball so far. We also talked about the new floor that's been done, well, that's been done in the gym, and also new bleachers that installed that's going, that's going pretty well. Has an update on the Ozlet project for the Simon property and where we are with that process, which is, it's coming along, right, Kate? I mean.
Yeah, the documents should be at the state now. We're just waiting for them to sign. Once they sign, we get the notification and we can start going through the process.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say from everybody, thanks, Bev. I know you don't want to be recognized, but we have to, we have to give you a kudos on it. Thank you.
All right. Again, I want to say thank you to Bev. She's always done above and beyond for that stuff. Property Enhancement Committee?
No report.
No report. Senior Citizen Advisory Committee?
No report.
Why, you guys are lazy on me. All right. We have public comment on committee recommendations. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on committee recommendations only? Don't rush at the same time. Nobody? Okay. All right, we'll go on to the first one. Committee recommendations. A planning and zoning commission has a recommendation to approve an application for a preliminary plat of subdivision to divide the parcel located at 1655 Schmal Road into six single-family lots with the following variations. One, variation to Title 11, Chapter 4, Section 11-5A. That's a lot of dashes. To allow lots 1 and 2 to have separate and direct access to Regional Artillery Street, Schmal Road. Number two, a variation to Title 11, Chapter 9, to reduce the minimum front yard setback from 70 to 25 feet for lots 1 and 2, which abut a regional artillery street for the property located at 1655 Schmal Road. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve?
To recommend it.
To recommend it, yeah.
So the petitioners are also here, if you want to hear from them at all?
I would like to.
Gentlemen?
Can you please state your name, please?
My name is Fazada DiMaris. Live in Glendale Heights.
I am his attorney, Lawrence Friedman. We're able to answer any questions that the committee may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Merritato, trustee Merritato?
Yes.[1753.42] Yes, uh, I missed the last meeting, Doug. I I what's the water? Do we figure out what we're gonna do with the drainage there?
Yes.
I have what?
Uh, so my understanding, maybe, I'll explain it. You can correct me if I'm wrong. The drainage there is gonna have a storm system built into five of the six lots with uh basins there to collect water and collect and move out to our storm system. And then it's also gonna have dry wells in the back of each yard as well to absorb the groundwater as well. So it's gonna have I don't kind of wish I had my back here. It's gonna have a dry well and a storm system built into the properties of each one of those.
Okay, is there gonna be water? Is 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 there gonna be water laying in the, I mean, not all the water is gonna drain out of it. It's gonna be a certain amount of water.
The swale, the swale system that was originally designed has been removed. The uh, it'll be graded so that all the water drains into the storms, right, and gets pushed out into our storm sewer system. Um, but the 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 swale that was built originally with the native plantings and all that, that's all been removed and they're putting in a dry well system and a storm system.
Okay, so in other words, everything's gonna drain out of the ground. There's not gonna be any water sitting in that wall until it gets to a certain level to drain out. That's what, that's what I'm trying to say.
It's not designed to hold water, but obviously after an extreme rain, there will be a a brief period until the water is absorbed and goes out, as as in any case, but it's not designed to hold water beyond that.
It's not designed to hold four, five, six, seven inches of water?
No.
Don't get to a level and drain and drain out?
No, you staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I I I would say it's not.
Correct. So it's essentially going to have a uh the slight slight swale that you see in a backyard so that they'll contour the lots. So there'll be a point where it's going to, water will flow to, then it's gonna go to the pipe, uh to the the inlets and then it'll go into the pipes and it'll be under the ground. So have rains, obviously, there's a potential for surface, but it's gonna be designed to handle to handle the water, go into the drainage system in through the backyards and connect through the pipes into the storm sewer system.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, are there any other questions? We're all good. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Mohammed, he made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bill, second? All right, uh, let's do roll call vote on that, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
President Kokar.
Yes.
All right.
And that motion was to move it to the board.
Move it to the board, recommendation to concur. Correct. Okay. Um, on discussion regarding, there is no other discussion regarding, I guess we could go on to um other. And Mayor, you had?
Uh, yes, half million dollar damages in damages.
Okay.
You got the floor.
You have a mission, uh, okay. Uh, I read one interview of a candidate who's running for village president. I will not name that, I will not announce name of that candidate, but he has given very false and misleading information in his interview to the Daily Herald. He mentioned that village lost five hundred thousand dollar in damages for those lawsuits based on racial profiling. For his or her good information, village did not lose five hundred thousand dollar, number one. Number two, this is false information, misleading, and actually even our insurers did not pay that much money. Uh, our insurers paid even less than fifty percent of that damages, you know. Claim was five hundred thousand, someone mentioned, but we will, uh, village insurers paid less than half of that money. So please do your homework first, you know, and we are here, we can provide you with all the information filed for you and get the correct information. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, we have nothing else. Um, public comment. Let's move to public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? If you could state your name, you know, of course.
Mister Epstein, Club Drive, Glendale Heights. Well, uh, with the upcoming election, let's get some disclosure out there. The DuPage County has a lovely website that allows the background check on everybody that's running. Um, we've had in this village a number of alcoholic related members in the that have been convicted and possibly could cost us a lot of money as a village. Please do your homework and look at all the candidates for president because they also become the liquor commissioner. And look up each one of them and see if there's any convictions for drunk driving. We all know that have investigated this, that there is somebody out there. And we don't need any more lawsuits brought against this village for somebody that has been convicted of drunk driving and caused injury. Luckily, uh, our administrator, God rest her soul, did not hurt anybody. But we don't need to continue to have this kind of behavior amongst our village officials. And I pray that you do not vote for this individual because of that. We don't need that. And also all the other ramifications, being the liquor commissioner that can be come down because of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? First one there wins.
Ed Pope Wayne Avenue. I got two questions, uh, one for Pat, one for Chief, I think. Pat, this one just popped in my head was when I was talking about the zoning commission, uh, are you still the head of the the committee?
What, the zoning?
Yeah, or plan commission?
Plan commission.
My question just was, when this came up a few years back for the same subdivision for the six houses, they said it didn't fit. They said that the the variances made it against code and they couldn't fit six houses on there, but now you can.
They started out with ten.
Yeah, but didn't he reduce it to six?
And then they reduced it to, I think, seven. And now with this plan, it's okay. They can, they meet all, they meet all the requirements.
Oh, so basically six will fit, seven wouldn't.
There's gonna be uh, three houses down Schmal Road.
Two on Schmal.
Two on Schmal and three on Frederick.
Four.
Three, four on Frederick. That's why I was worried about the water, which way.
All the houses, they don't need a variance for the width of the properties.
But they did.
Well, because they, yeah, because they were gonna build too many house.
Right, they were gonna build ten.
So the, so dropping that house off makes it so they did the parcel.
Right, they dropped it down to six now, so.
I thought it was six last time, okay. And then Chief, I just have a question. You know, the the cost of the uh extra security for Summer Fest, no reflection on you guys at all, of course, but it's just getting astronomical. Is there, do the other communities, are they still helping you out? Like, do are we getting any input from them to 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 help reduce that cost? Cause, you know, I know everybody wants Summer Fest to be super safe and you guys do a just a wicked job. It's great, no one, you feel safe there and everything, but but that's a lot of money this year.
So they, we used to have it, they broke the security up into two different firms. This firm is doing everything and they have for the last two years. The increase from last year to this year is a two percent increase is about two thousand four hundred, I believe, over last year. The personnel stays the same. Now remember, they are actually doing the security gates and they're working the midway or the the food area. We still share reciprocal agreements with our law enforcement agencies, so other agencies will come to us and we will come to their fest too. So we do do the switch off, but the manpower that need, that needed to do a fest is a lot. So that's why we use a security firm as well.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, the the two percent makes it sound not so bad, but you know, it's that total number. When you start seeing crossing the hundred thousand dollar mark, it's just like, wow. All right, well, thanks for asking me. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Hi, Cheryl Swanson-Fron, Fullerton Avenue. Was gonna say something else, but I'm gonna do this instead. To the park people and public works, hopefully today was the last day of snow, but I gotta say thank you. The two guys that always shovel and solve for me and my favorite drivers in the snowplow trucks. Kudos. Hopefully we're done, but I want to just say thank you to the guys that were out keeping the roads clean and the sidewalks clean.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address this board? Being none, I guess we could, oh.
Hi, everybody. Um, what a breath of fresh air. I've been meaning to talk like this for a long time, but since I am, I was running for village clerk, yes, I will clear the rumors in a little bit, but this is for my community, really. Um, over a year ago, my community came before this village board asking for support and we were dismissed, ignored and underestimated. That was a big mistake. Um, because we are still here, we are organized and we are really united, uh, way more than ever. And we're ready to bring in real change, not just us, but the entire village. So I'm looking forward to this election. Whether this year or the next two years, the people of Glendale Heights deserve leadership that listens, respects, and represents everyone. Now let's talk about the leadership and what it should not look like. Michael Light has made it clear through his actions that not, he is not an ally to the Muslim community. My Muslim community, please listen to this. He has defended harmful rhetoric, disregarded our concerns without reasoning and discredited our voices for those who have worked tirelessly to advocate for a better Glendale Heights. I was gonna say something about the other two who are running, but I'll keep that to myself. I think we all know that the Muslim community is not terrorist and we do not harm other people. Um, now I want to address the rumors. Yes, I am withdrawing my candidacy for village clerk. I'm sure many of you guys have good things and bad things to say about that, but I hopefully it's good. Um, cause I really wanted to bring change to this village. I really wanted to represent all of you guys with unity and respect overall. Um, but I do want to say that I am fully standing with Kim Darling as your next village clerk. Um, and this is not about title and it's not about the future of Glendale Heights. We need leadership that is accessible, accountable, and committed to working with the people, not the other way around. We need collaboration, not division. We need progress. And to my supporters, I really want you guys to go out and vote. I got, I want you guys to understand that people like Michael Light.
Thank you, Nada.
Is not for our community. I'm sorry. And I'm looking for unity in this village.
Thank you.
You need to be fired, by the way, still.
Thank you, thank you. Um, motion to adjourn. Or is there anyone else? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Bill, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. No opposed, motion is adjourned. Thank you.